Welcome tonight to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, May 13th. We have a nice crowded session tonight, so welcome to you and to all of those who might be watching us on our public access television. Madam Clerk, could you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Wilper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you would all join me, please, for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Chief Dan Trelka, our Director of Safety Services. Dan, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is a 1B5, which is changing the date of effective, date of employment. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of May 6, 2013's regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We're going to start this evening with a proclamation before a couple of recognitions, but I believe Director Trelka is going to come forward and maybe bring a couple of police officers with him. Or more. Hi, guys, come on up. Why don't a couple of you get on one side and the rest of you on the other side. There you go. Dan, get over here, so we balance this thing out here, okay? Very good. Welcome, everybody. This is National Police Week, so we are recognizing that by issuing a proclamation on behalf of the city of Waterloo for, also for Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 12, 2013 as National Police Week, and May 15 of this year to be Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas the law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is known that all too often police officers are killed in the line of duty nationwide, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12, 2013 as National Police Week, and order all flags on all city facilities to be flown at half-staff on May 15, 2012, on Peace Officers Memorial Day. I call upon all citizens to honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I also call upon all of our citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and our families in safety each day, and to return to our homes knowing we are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Dan, this is for you, thank you. Would you like to say something, or someone, please? There you go.
Well, we, first of all, I want to introduce our officers. We have Officer DiVale, Officer Brunel, Officer Fresh, who's going to be recognized further tonight, and Officer Pol. Sadly, the Waterloo Police Department has lost seven officers in the line of duty. Two were killed in crashes, and five have been shot and killed. That is a sad distinction for a city our size, so we really appreciate this recognition. And we invite all the audience members, everybody watching on TV, and all the council members to attend the police memorial ceremony on May 15 at Veterans Memorial Hall at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's being hosted by the Evansdale Police Department, but it's being held here in Waterloo because it's the perfect venue for such a ceremony as this. So again, thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
These officers do a darn good job, and we're awfully proud of them, and we appreciate this recognition.
Thank you. It's also fitting, it's, I just kind of noticed, Dan, it's fitting tonight on this week that you led the pledge, and we have these officers for the Peace Officer Memorial, and I get to recognize not only a great police officer, but a good friend, in Tim Fresh, for 30 years of service. You know, it's, when I took office, I started the process of giving a plaque to all of those that served 30 years with the City of Waterloo, and I think it's a real accomplishment for anyone to stay in one place of employment for 30 years, and I think it warrants some kind of recognition. So we're going to do that tonight with Tim. I remember, I'm not sure if this is good or bad, Tim, I remember when Tim started, I was on the Police Department, I remember when Tim started, remember when he got married, remember when his first child was born, so Tim and I go back a ways, and I can tell you that Tim is not only one of our best in uniform, he's also just a great guy. So it is a real privilege for me to give Tim, presented to Tim Fresh, an appreciation of 30 years of valuable and dedicated service to the City of Waterloo, Iowa, May 13, 2013. Tim, there you are, congratulations, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. Also, just real quickly, our May Team Member of the Month, Matt Vlasic, is not with us this morning, or this morning, this evening, but I just want to take this opportunity to remember Matt, or recognize Matt as our May Team Member of the Month. Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
One more thing. Pointing Mr. Hart, 1B5 was, oh no, we haven't done that yet. Yes, Mr. Hart.
I'd like to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B10, which the amendment for 1B5 is included in that. Also with the approval of our consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $1,891,482.04. That's 1,891,482.04.
Second.
Did I say B10 or B11? Did I make that B11?
I think you did, right. I think you said 11, Counsel. If you didn't, let the record reflect if there is, the numerical Bs are out of order, 11 comes through 10, and there is a B.
Actually, it should be 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
The numbers are thirted over.
Okay. So we have 13 items on our consent agenda tonight, and the record will reflect it, it's all included, is that correct?
I'm so confused.
Very good. We got a second?
Yes, sir.
I'm confused also, we've got a motion. Second, Counsel, do you have any questions regarding consent agenda? Call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. I want to note that Matt Binger, who is also not with us tonight, I don't believe, has been hired and has been appointed to an engineering technician effective upon a mutually agreeable date in the near future. Matt has a job right now that he's getting out of to come to work for the city, so welcome, Matt, to the City of Waterloo. Let's take resolutions, please, starting with number two. Straight of time, Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving request for authorization to publish the 2012 salaries for city employees and officials as requested, as required by law. Item number three is adopting a resolution approving recommendation of award of bid to CenturyLink in the amount of approximately $4,000 per month for local and long-distance phone service, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Story Construction Company of Ames, Iowa, in the amount of $3,115,000, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2013 Stormwater Pump Stations, Burden Creek, Westfield Avenue, and Benton Street, contract number 831, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding two, three, or four?
No, sir.
Call call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes on two, and I abstain on number three, and yes on four.
Mr. Wilper? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. We have four more resolutions. Could someone take all four, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo in the amount of $7,805,772.93, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the FY 2013 Street Reconstruction Program, Divisions 1 and 2, plus Alternate A, contract number 832, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Item six is a resolution approving the donation of land from Mixed Bag Properties LLC to the City of Waterloo for property generally described as 413 Wellington Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. Seven is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Barley Farms Limited to farm 3.35 acres of city-owned land located at the northwest corner of Amesboro Avenue and West Shalice Road, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And eight is a resolution setting the date of hearing as June 3 to approve development agreement with Wendell Gaines for property located at 532 Sumner Street that was obtained through Section 657A of the Iowa Code, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Very good. Motion's on all four. Counsel, I know there's some comments or questions out there on some of these. I think there is, Mr. Getty.
I would like to, question number six, and ask the counsel to really take a look at that. I don't know why we would want to accept a piece of property that is sitting there waiting to be tore down, and have the city spend $15,000 to tear the building down. I don't know why we would do that, and I don't think we should, and I would strongly urge that we all vote no on item six.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Getty. Does anybody else have comments regarding that or anything else? I'm going to ask Noel to explain that, but, Mr. Jones?
I'll wait for Noel's explanation.
Noel, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. 413 Wellington is a, the end of a rowhouse dwelling, there's about six units there. It's in a bad state of repair. It's not considered to be a dangerous building, so at this point, the private owner would not have to demolish the building. They could simply keep it boarded up, keep it from people being able to enter in there easily. We were looking at this as a 657A. Of course, that's a process that we've been utilizing pretty heavily to try and go after these dilapidated housing in areas, so we can try to get new housing starts, new infill construction, clean up neighborhoods. With this particular one, it is owned by, Mixed Bag is owned by a local person, John Evelyn, that had bought it on tax sale, similar to a lot of the other 657A properties that are bought by people in Wisconsin, California, Arizona. This one happened to be someone local we knew. We contacted Mr. Evelyn, he is willing to donate it to the city. He was probably not aware of the amount of repairs that was needed when he bought it on tax sale. The next adjoining property owner, again, these are road dwellings, so this is the next unit touching this, is owned by Tony Fishels. He is a contractor by trade, he has some rental properties. He walked through it with a couple of my staff today, he's walked through it previously with Craig Clark from the Building Department, and believes that he can fix this up if we take ownership of it. Again, they just had another walk-through today. Again, this would, this would put it back in the hands through a development agreement if we take ownership of this, for someone to go in there and fix this building up and make it back into a positive part of that neighborhood.
So what did you just say, Noel? If we take ownership?
I think, I think we should take it.
If we take ownership of it, are we going to then give it to this, Mr. Fishels?
We would take ownership of this, draft a development agreement with Mr. Fishels to fix this building up. Therefore, at the end, we get what we want, which is a nice, nice new townhouse in that area. Renovated townhouse.
Mr. Hart? Mr. Schmidt?
Noel, when was the last time you went through that place? Because I drove by there today, the doors are all wide open, the windows are all wide open. I've heard from some folks that they've been in there pulling out copper and cable and wiring and...
I have not personally been in the building, Mr. Fishels, and two of my staff went through the building today and walked through it.
Okay, but I thought you said it was boarded up for secure purposes and that type of...
They would need to do that, moving ahead.
Okay.
Is what the ordinance would say, is basically they have to board it so it's not a dangerous building. At this point, I don't think it had been, since we'd started working on it.
But your staff is saying that is rehabitable.
Mr. Fishels thinks so, which is more important than my staff, I think, but he thought that it could be done. He has some reservations about, you know, you're getting into an old building if something strange were to come forward, but from what he saw today on the, on the exterior and interior of the building, without getting into the framing and all that, it looked good.
Why can't Evelyn just give it to him?
I'm not certain.
In that way, if we give it to the next gentleman, which I'm pretty sure he's a person of his word, and that person says, "Well, just as Councilman Schmidt said, folks have ran through here within the last couple days, I can't do anything with it," then it puts us back as our responsibility to get rid of that.
I'm not, I'm not certain if there's a reason why they can't do it that way, or if it just wasn't explored. We, we had approached Mr. Evelyn, and then, based on the conversations from Thursday, we approached Mr. Fishels pretty quickly.
Would there be a legal aspect to that question? Is that legally something that could be done?
If we take the property back under 657, we can give it to someone else, or we, I suspect there may be a negotiation going on here that we don't want to get too far into it in an open meeting. What conditions would Mr. Fishels put on it to take it? Would he want abatement? Would he want just title? How far do we have to go to get him to take it? And I don't know where you and your staff are with him on that, but it's sensitive to talk about it now, because how far we're going to go, we don't know.
I thought the question was, couldn't Mr. Fishels and Mr. Evelyn work out an agreement so the city's not involved and not liable for anything? That was, I think...
They could.
So there'd be no legal reason they couldn't?
No.
Okay.
Bob, did you have a question?
Unless we take title.
Yeah.
It looked like to me that the five-town homes in there were all in very marginal shape, so was it, I think it'd be like pennywise and pound foolish if you fixed up one end of it, and then the rest of them, you know, are sitting there deteriorating.
Yeah, I mean, they're all individually owned, they're all owned by different, five different property owners, the remaining ones. So I'm not sure how we'd get them to commit to fixing them up, other than just following the Building Maintenance Code.
Has Mr. Fishels been a reasonably well-performing individual, or is that not a fair question to ask?
I believe so, yes.
Ms. Cole?
I'm sure everyone is a person of their word, but I'm getting very tired of buying property, particularly from a landlord that is well-known in this community, who could afford to handle this property. And we have spent how many months with our good folks here, talking about a nuisance property ordinance because of this kind of property? And why do we want to own it? My thoughts.
Further? Mr. Jones?
Noel, do you know when this property was acquired by Mixed Bag?
I don't have that information in front of me. Usually, the detailed report on the assessor's office would give that information, but I don't have that in front of me.
Quinn can get it for us.
Oh, he's put a lot of pressure on me. So, but it looks like from the abstract that it was bought at a tax sale.
Do we know when?
You know when?
11, June 20, 2011.
So how much money did he make?
So in the meantime, he hasn't been paying his taxes, for weed removal, sidewalk repair. He hasn't been paying anything, just let it go.
No, they haven't been paying. Sir, there's another lien on the property now.
Right, so, I mean, that's not the right thing to do for anybody.
This was, this is why we started the 657A process so aggressively. If you recall back before 657A, the city would go and get court orders for dilapidated structures. We would demolish those, and we would place them as liens on these properties. Of course, the property owners then would have a lot that has an $8,000 lien on it, so they couldn't sell it to anyone, they didn't want to pay taxes on it, so they'd let it go back to tax sale. And then the next person would do the same thing that bought it at tax sale. Probably about 10 years later, the county would end up taking it, because nobody's buying it on tax sale anymore, then we'd end up taking it with, of course, our own liens against it, which we'd forgive. In the same time, you'd have the lot on there that we don't own for a 10-year period. The 657A process, and again, we're doing that essential process here, the only difference is, since we knew the landlord, we went to him and asked him just to deed it to us instead of doing 657A. The difference here is that we own the lots from day one. Granted, that brings some responsibility with us for maintenance, for snow removal and all that, but at least we have the ability to try and turn them into positive lots again, buildings again, because we have control over them. Our ultimate goal in here is to make this building rehabbed again, livable again, occupied again, as a positive of that neighborhood, and this is the means we thought was best to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Noel, right now, we're going into 2014, and we've had discussions, I don't know for how many years, about how much money we're going to put forth for these types of properties. We have a huge project next year that folks have been asking for us to take care of for I don't know how many years, so we're finally going to address that, which we don't even possibly know if we'll have enough money to be able to demolish that, because we already have a list of properties that we have that are still back in the cookie jar, because we didn't budget enough money to, to just tear down many at a time. So even if we get this property, and if this property doesn't jump other priorities we have, when are we even going to be able to tear this down ourselves? Because we don't, we don't have the money to do it right now.
Well, and that was why we approached Mr. Fishels. Hopefully, we'll get this flipped, and he can actually take this off our hands through a development agreement, which would cause him to perform and fix it up to whatever standards that we had negotiated in that development agreement, and avoid demolition. If that falls through, you're correct, it goes on the waiting list, and we spend quite a bit of money in maintenance for mowing, snow removal, and demolition of a lot of properties per year. I think we're starting to see some positives, interest, at least from private developers, on some of these larger sites. Baltimore Field, Williston's Field, hopefully see some new construction coming this year. And hopefully, that will leak out to some of these smaller infill lots, and we'll see some new infill housing.
So if we, so if Mr. Fishels does not get it, we do not have the money to tear this down right now, if we jump over other projects, if we don't jump over other projects?
It would all depend on the bids on the big project, at this point.
The answer to that is yes, we don't have the money to do it.
Okay, so before, you know, before, before we voted on it, it'd be nice to see if they can just do an exchange of property. Then that way, I mean, if they can't, maybe we come back, but, I mean, I'm not going to support it right now when they can work with each other possibly, and maybe he can just take it from them.
We can definitely ask him of that. The, the one negative there is if they decide to do that, there's nothing for a timeline for Mr. Fishels to go after this, so if it deeds it from one, and he doesn't get a chance to do it, or something goes bad, then we'll probably end up going back through the 657A process for it, but we'd have that avenue to decide then.
So he could have it possibly longer than we would, before we can do something to tear it down?
Mr. Hart? Mr. Wilper?
Noel, what is it, what does 657A cost us legal, legal-wise, to get that done? How much money do we spend to do that?
It'll vary, it'll vary, because we have to do some lien searches to find out who ownership goes into. Probably, I'd guesstimate anywhere from $150 to $500 per property.
Okay, because I feel that whether we take these, take this property or not, we're going to end up with it. Might as well save the $500.
Mr. Hart? Mr. Schmidt?
Could I maybe make a motion to table?
Certainly can.
Item number six, pending further conversation possibly between Mr. Evelyn and Mr. Fishels, maybe with Mr. Anderson, and let this thing simmer for a little while, rather than voting.
Second. Motion is second to table, item number six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six is table. We're voting on five, seven, and eight. Are there comments on any of those three?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Number eight, Aspro, I will not be supporting that, because we only got one bid, again.
That's number five.
Sorry, number five.
What was, was that a statement or a question?
Just a statement.
You are correct, that's a correct statement. Are there further questions on five, seven, or eight? Call call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Oh, sorry, yes on all, except no on five, no on six, so that's...
Well, six is off the table.
No on five, six is off the table, yes on seven, yes on eight.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good. Five, seven, and eight passed, six is table. Item number nine, please. Mr. Greenwood? Make the motion to see if filed, and consider passed for the second time, the ordinance relating prime property, Title V, Chapter V, under the listing with the chronic nuisance properties, Title V, Chapter V, and that will change the chronic nuisance properties ordinance. Second. Very good. There is a motion and a second on item number five. If there is anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak to this, I will allow comments at this time. I will say that since our last meeting last Monday, Chief Trelka has had meetings with neighborhood groups, with the landlords. We made good progress, I think, and I think there are some things that Chief Trelka can do to tweak that ordinance to the satisfaction, if not totally close, to the Landlords Association, so I'm glad to see that's going forward. And if need be, we will have another meeting on the 14th with the same group or more to further tweak it. So we are making action on that, but if anybody wants to make a comment tonight, they are free to do so at this time.
Ryan Madison, 650 Dawson Street. I'm definitely in favor for this. One thing I didn't see, and you guys didn't ask questions, is accountability on this, like this property that we just got to talking about on number six. No one asked, how many times have we wrote a citation? We need some accountability when it comes to planning and zoning. If you go back and check, and I hope you guys do your research, I doubt not one citation has been written on that property since it's been in that state it's been in. And if people... people can't do their job and write those citations, we need to start finding people that actually need, will do the job. Because I know there's a lot of people out there that will do that job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. There's been a motion and a second for the first motion. Are there any other comments, counsel? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Very good. Motion carries.
Make the motion to suspend the rules.
Second. All in favor?
Mr. Hart?
I'm sorry?
If I could, I did just want to mention that, as you did, we've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. There was a meeting last Thursday night, was well-attended. There was a lot of, I think, real good dialogue, a lot of interaction. And for that reason, I'll vote against suspending the rules and waiving the third reading pending that meeting tomorrow night.
Very good.
So, I just wanted to get that in the record.
And I asked for a voice vote, and then I was wrong in that it's a roll call vote. So, Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote. Does anybody else have comments regarding the motion to suspend? It's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Very good. Motion to suspend fails.
Mr. Har-
Mr. Greenwood?
I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Okay. Item number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
Item number 10, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the Waste Management Service's superintendent to prepare specifications, bid document, et cetera, that's for the purchase of a CT 514 compost chuner for the yard waste site.
I don't see any questions regarding this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
I'd like to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to adopt a resolution on setting the date of hearing and bid opening as May 28th, 2013, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid document, et cetera, and taking of bids.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hart? I move to instruct Director of Technology to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the purchase of edge network switches for the city phone system replacement project.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I will be abstaining on, on this motion and also on motion, or item number 12, as my company may be bidding on both of those. And I've noticed in the minutes of the previous meetings, I should have been abstaining initially rather than waiting until we took individual votes, probably. So, anyhow.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as May 28th, 2013, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries to item 12.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move, we instruct Director of Technology to prepare, to prepare plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera, for the network cabling project for the city phone system replacement project.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move, we receive and file plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move, we adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote. Please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move, we adopt a resolution setting the date of hearing and bid opening as May 28th, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Very good. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Item 13, I make a motion to instruct the airport director to prepare plans, specifications, and form a contract for the rehabilitation of taxiway B project at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second. Very good. Do the council, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file plans, specifications, and form a contract.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt a resolution preliminarily approving the plans, specifications, and form a contract.
Second. It's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt a resolution setting data hearing and bid opening as June, June 3, 30 June, 2013, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice of plans, specifications, and the form of that contract.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Well-
What's his name?
I don't know who I started with.
I think we're done. I think it passed.
It hasn't voted.
Forgive us, ladies and gentlemen, we've lost it tonight. But that is the end of our regularly scheduled business for tonight. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor, counsel, now is the time to do so. Please just step to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Jerry Shatzer, 1829 West 7th Street, Waterloo, Iowa. As I was watching your chief of police, or whatever he is, I don't know what your title is, and I was listening to your statistics on the Waterloo Police Department. How long ago wasn't that a policeman was shot in Waterloo?
What's the-
Well, I guess, I guess where I'm coming from-
Yeah, give us some-
You guys emit a lot of propaganda and it turns a lot of people off. Yes, I like our policemen very much. I take 100% of them. But there's 10 jobs right here that are listed in the top 10 of being dangerous jobs. The police was just admitted to it this year. Again, they were taken off and put back on it. That's what I'm saying. If we're going to have a good city, then we got to be straightforward. Number two, I think it's time that we look at a city manager. The reason I say that, every decision I see out here, and a lot of people, is decisions on, will I get voted in again? Not, is it good for the city? You know, things you got going on downtown, I had a very reputable person who's very heavy into real estate make the statement is, I think sometimes we're trying to protect their grandkids because now we got the parents and their children taken care of. That's what I'm saying. People aren't buying this pie in the sky and the older people are, yeah, they probably are. But the young people don't buy that anymore. They got the internet to go to. In fact, I suggest every person listening, go to the internet and look up dangerous jobs, period. And that'll tell you where the real dangerous jobs are, what they're getting, how much a year, and how many were killed. See, I used to work for Deere and Company Legal Department. We had eight people, I can't say Deere and I won't say the company, but in one month, we had eight people die. You know, it was just part of the job.
Thank you, Mr. Shatzer.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good day.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mark Pregler, 5312 Hammond Avenue, and I just wanted to comment on Mr. Trelka's meeting of last week with the Neighborhood Association and some of the Landlords Association. It was definitely equitable. I think it was eye-opening from several different parts, and in particular, discussing in detail some of the Landlord Tenant Act and how it applies to some of the things that we're trying to do with the nuisance ordinance. Again, we're not disagreeing with the goal, but trying to get there legally so that we can put teeth into it, that we can enforce what we've already got in our leases by working together with the police department and the nuisance ordinance to make it all work together. We're trying to fit all the pieces together, and it was an excellent workshop. So, thank you for voting to carry it on one more week because it's next, this next one for tomorrow should be just as enlightening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ryan Moss, 650 Dawson Street. At first, I was going to come up here with a long laundry list of issues that I have with my community and just cross my finger and pray they didn't fall on deaf ears. Instead, I'm going to try to take a different route. I'm going to tell you about a little boy named Devon. I'm going to let you know, I'm going to be biased because Devon is my son, my pride and joy, and he was, inspired me to